And I would like to introduce actually the team who has been leading this conversation. Harriet Adair, who is our director, executive director of school support for pre-K through 12 schools. Judy Brandon, who's the director of enrollment and transfer offices. And Antonio Lopez, who is the regional administrator for the Jefferson Cluster. And Sue Ann Higgins, who is our chief academic officer. Since our last board meeting, we've continued listening sessions in the community. So after having done a series of conversations that were with individual school communities to allow them to figure out where, what the impacts could be on them, what their concerns were, what their hopes were, we then had the second cluster-wide conversation on Saturday, which drew probably 350 people. And like very robust conversation, but a lot of identification of what people's concerns and hopes are. So one of the things we're going to do tonight is draw up, draw through some of the themes that have come from these various listening sessions. We've also continued, in addition to the individual school conversations, there were cluster-wide conversations with parents of our ESL students, parents of our special education students. Another meeting on Saturday evening with all of the principals in the cluster. So we've had, and these continue, so you're going to hear some of the, again, what are the themes coming through the conversations? And what are the things people are interested in seeing get pulled through into the next recommendation? Secondly, throughout these conversations, there's been a continued question about, okay, how does our enrollment and transfer policy fit into this? And it emerged in a number of the cluster conversations or school-based conversations back in December. The board spent time at its last board meeting talking about that. So we've invited tonight our superintendent's advisory committee on enrollment and transfer that's actually been convened over the last three years to go deep in their understanding of our enrollment and transfer issues and policy issues. And they are going to come forward tonight and make comment on what they see from their perspective. And then finally, at our last board meeting, we had a conversation about what happens if we pause and if no change occurs? What are the existing conditions in the Jefferson Cluster? So we're going to make that visible tonight. And actually up on the, the other request was to make visible what are the, what are the current transfer patterns within the Jefferson Cluster and how those compare with transfer patterns in the rest of the district. So all of those things are part of what we're going to make visible tonight and then allow the board more time for conversation. The next stage of this process will be a single proposal that will be the superintendent's proposal that again will be then out for public comment all the way till the end of February, at which point, but the board then becomes the listener. So we're then still in conversation about what changes do we make or not make at this particular moment in time to get to our desired outcome on behalf of kids. So with that, I will turn it over to our, our team.
Well, chairs, room's on the floor, I'm directors, student representative and superintendent. And ladies and gentlemen, we have, this is the feedback that we have received since the two options came about from January 14th to today. And we'll get to that soon.
There you go.
And just before into that, just know that we have read every email and we have, we have read every packet that was sent to us. So this is just from January 14th, when the two options came about to today that we have, we have been at 12 meetings and community events, total attendance of more than 700 people. That meeting notes that are posted on the website. We have received more than 300 written responses, including online surveys. And our goal really is to distill down to prominent themes without losing unique voices. What we heard so far in terms of the big picture is that structure is not the most important topic. Transfer policy, leadership, school marketing should be addressed before moving students. Do not close any more schools. Community hasn't do more than share inconsistency with equity policy. Concern over students enduring multiple shifts due to frequent structural or programmatic In addition, we have, these are the themes that we have heard in terms of the K-8 and middle.
Sorry, go back to that one.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, it threw me. So other things that we have desired for more specifics of, specifics so families can better evaluate options. Concerned that options were not derived from community's support and long-term vision. Options that involve more bus in race hardship and safety concerns. Now, now, in terms of the K-8 in middle school, the survey responses show mixed feedback on structure. Fifty-six percent support a middle school option, 44 favor of a stronger K-8. Some groups, including the English language learners, stated strong preference for K-8s. And also with the special education, skepticism over whether PPS will staff and resource a new school structure well, creating additional resistance to change. Uncertainty about the benefits of a shared campus structure, resistance to new structured programs that feel like experimentation. Questions about the benefits of colocating King and access for students in both programs. Options presented don't seem to reflect the feedback. Community wants to collaborate on solutions. Options not just give feedback to inform the process. Acknowledgement that the process heart brought the cluster together and created cross-school ties among families and teachers.
Okay. That's it?
Okay.
So that was a bit of a laundry list. As we said, with that much feedback, we're sifting through it as quickly as we can. These are some of the things that rise to the surface. And as you heard, a frequently occurring one is to take a hard look at where we are with enrollment and transfers. So I'm going to give you a very brief overview. And there's a handout that we've shared with the public and that we put online that you have with you too, that I think has some of this information. So we have a current transfer policy. It's been in place since 2004. It was about a two-year process to create that policy. At that time, back in the 2002 to 2004 timeframe, we see a district with rapidly declining enrollment. Also with no child left behind and charter schools as new realities and an environment where each school had its own transfer rule. So I highlight those as to emphasize that it was a different time with different conditions and different problems, if you will, that people were looking to respond to. We feel that the policy created at the time emphasized equality in transfer choices. So in those individual choices and not on equity in the transfer outcomes. So what the overall impact, particularly through an equity lens. I'm going to briefly highlight some of the things that we see as conditions, both in the Jefferson Cluster and in the district as a whole, that are outcomes in part of that policy. And so I'm going to do that by referring to these graphs. And let me just explain the graphs very, very quickly because I'm not going to go through every row. I know you're disappointed by that. So for each of these rows, what we looked at is the type of school a student attends overall, which is the very first bar. And each color is a different type of school that a student attends. Thank you. Both their, whether it's their own neighborhood school, a school in the Jefferson Cluster, another neighborhood school somewhere else in Portland, a focus option such as immersion or arts, a PPS charter school, or an alternative or special school. So those are the different bars. The first column is for all of the students in that area and then broken down by race, white, black, Hispanic, and on and on. These are the patterns that we see in the Jefferson Cluster. And these are the patterns that we see in the remainder of PPS. And you can just visually see that there's some differences particularly in this blue bar and then in how the rest of the kids are distributed across schools. So to summarize briefly, we see lower percentages of students attend their neighborhood school in Jefferson Cluster than elsewhere. So that's a smaller blue bar for Jefferson Cluster, higher in the rest of the district. What people have observed to us in the meetings, they're absolutely right about. There's no denying that. And by race, we see that 52% of white students leave the Jefferson Cluster to go elsewhere, while only 28% of white students in other areas leave their neighborhood cluster to attend school. So that's a really telling statistic as well. Additionally, we see that 37% of Jefferson Cluster white students who transfer, so not the kids who stay in their neighborhood school, but of those that transfer, 37% of them are attending charter, alternative, or special schools compared with 17% of white students who transfer in the rest of the district. And one of the reasons that I raise that is to point out that charters, alternatives, and special schools are generally not directly impacted by your transfer policy. So it's other policies that govern how students enter those schools, where they're located, their enrollment size, et cetera. We also noted, and I'm going to flip back, I'm sorry if that's annoying. I'm going to focus for a minute on our African-American or our black students, which we see here as the rest of the district, with two-thirds of them not residing in the Jefferson Cluster. But we see a relatively prominent red bar of students, African-American students who live elsewhere in PPS transferring into the Jefferson Cluster. And we see that that's repeated to a certain degree for students who reside in the Jefferson Cluster. So this is the portion who attend their own neighborhood school in the Jefferson Cluster. This is the portion who are attending other schools in the Jefferson Cluster. And we feel that that shows the fact that you have 44% of African-American students in the Jefferson Cluster who transfer and attend other neighborhood schools in the cluster. And 27% of African-American students in other clusters who transfer, of those who transfer, 27% of them are coming into the Jefferson Cluster, shows that the Jefferson Cluster remains a safe haven, if you will, or a place that African-American students continue to seek and to come to. That could be, I mean, we're hypothesizing here, that could be because many families have been forced to move out because of housing prices and other housing patterns, and yet they find a way to return. So I think that's, it's important to note that. I also wanted to point out some of the things that have changed since the policy has been in place. These are practical changes that maybe not as prominent. We did establish our standing committee that you're going to hear from in a minute in 2009, so they've, gulp, been in place for four years now. We also established high school transfer rules for the entire transfers, high school transfer system back in 2010. In 2011, kind of following along with that began limiting neighborhood-to-neighborhood transfers in all of our schools that covered grades K through eight. So now, at the time, you could have a maximum of 25 or 30 students transferring into a kindergarten, which is more than one section for any one school. Now the maximum is 10. And we had middle schools that had as many as 90 transfer slots, and now the maximum is 30. So we've squeezed down there if it's a neighborhood school just, and as well, we do have growth in our district. And because of that growth, we see that we have now 12 schools that are completely closed to transfer. So where there isn't space, we certainly aren't open to transfers. Finally, last year, we saw the end of that no child left behind priority that gave a layer of choice that we were required to provide in the system. That layer is now clear, and we have more flexibility in how we manage these choices locally. So with that in mind, we do see possibilities for transfer change. We also see that it's a far-reaching issue and requires a broad, active engagement process and enough time to do that. I'd like to invite Neely Wells and Scott Bailey from the SACIT committee to come forward. They have a few words to share with you. And while they're coming up, I just want to point out, these are, what you're reading here is a few of the suggestions that we've not just heard from SACIT, but from a group of principals. We have one or two in the room today, particularly principals of focus schools who have been interested in this topic, as well as community members abroad. We've heard ideas from board members. I mean, like my file of ideas is, is deep. And, okay. So what you're going to hear from now is two representatives from our superintendent's advisory committee on enrollment and transfer. There are 14 seats on the committee. We have nine active members right now, which means we are indeed recruiting new members. Phone number is on the screen. Operators are not standing by at this time, but we would be happy to walk anyone through the application process. We're looking for folks that have a broad, you know, can do that district-wide perspective, particularly from the Roosevelt, Madison, and Wilson Clusters. We don't have representatives from those clusters right now, but given their perspective, they're going to share a few thoughts with you.
Hi. First, I'm going to acknowledge a document I believe the board members received yesterday called the Superintendent's Advisory Committee on Enrollment and Transfer Guiding Beliefs. And we all took another look at them after almost four years, and it was good to remember and good that we haven't strayed so far. Too far.
Speak for yourself.
As always. SACIT sees that there's a possibility here in this moment. There's a chance to create policies and align tools so that all schools throughout the district have an equitable, cohesive, and relevant enrollment balancing mechanism. In some ways, it would be nice if we could alter the transfer policy and fix the issue of students attending schools other than their neighborhood school. SACIT experience tells us that kids also change schools using charter and private schools, homeschooling, transferring to another district, the hardship petition process, and even actually physically moving. So we know that transfers are more than a symptom of a cause than are more a symptom than a cause, although they do become a part of a cycle of decline. Some of the reasons people enter the transfer cycle are based on perceptions that are decades and decades old. Here's what it looks like. Kids leave, funding follows, program offerings decline, reputation declines, kids leave, funding drops further, program offering and reputation decline, kids leave, et cetera. SACIT believes it is important to examine and have a purposeful set of policies pertaining to transfers. And we urgently hope you understand that altering transfers alone will not be a fix-all for enrollment balancing issues. We've been involved in, received briefings on, and care deeply about the Jefferson Cluster configuration process. This is one of many very important processes we have witnessed and/or been involved with since the inception of SACIT. We have seen similar issues at Rigler, Alameda-Bomont Process, Sunnyside, Dunaway and Llewellyn, Skyline, the Brooklyn Neighborhood, and Winter Haven and Grouse Schools, Saban and Access, Harrison Park, Franklin, Lincoln, Jefferson, Madison, and Marshall Schools. We've also studied the effects of the geographic location of charters, focus options, and immersion schools and programs. Many existing adoption policies were written in the 1990s or early 2000s. It seems to SACIT that the balance has shifted some since then. Maybe previously, the emphasis was on educational choice as an option for enrollment theory. It seems that now there is more emphasis on neighborhood schools and certainly how race affects students throughout PPS. Please look at existing policies, examine them in relation to the priorities of 2013 and 10 or 20 years beyond while you engage in the upcoming visioning process. SACIT recommends looking at each policy to evaluate its efficacy in terms of the lenses of equity and excellence. Our intentional examination of equity didn't even exist when many policies and ADs pertaining to enrollment and transfer were written. We need policies that govern each subset of schools, neighborhood, focus option, immersion, K-5, K-8, pre-K, why they exist, within which parameters. There probably need to be policy or an integration of values into policies that addresses the ongoing tension between neighborhood schools and educational choice. When the policies are known to support the values of the district, they can then be used to create tools for achieving the goals of PPS. Some mechanisms attached to enrollment balancing will need to be reanalyzed because they affect the pace of change. A 13-year implementation period means that two generations of children have to wait for programs to improve. A few of those mechanisms are flexibility and agility, catchment, boundary changes, sibling coattendants policy, staying, a child staying at a school through the highest grade after moving. And we ask that you don't use transfers to address boundary issues or vice versa. It's not the same mechanism. And always look at catchment boundary issues across the district because there is always a domino effect. So luckily, we don't have to speak out loud very often. SACIT is poised to address looking at these policies. We enthusiastically suggest that now is the opportunity, and we hope to serve. And again, there are positions on the SACIT committee, and we hope to hear from community members from across the city.
Hi. Thanks for inviting us to speak tonight. I wanted to add a few particulars to hopefully complement what Neely said. First thing is, when SACIT initially looked at the high school transfer issue, and it was pretty clear to see that the way the transfer policy was working was that some schools were being bled of their students. Partly that was due to NCLB, of course. When we looked then at K-8, the picture got more complicated. If neighborhood-to-neighborhood transfers had been stopped across the board, some small schools like King would have gotten smaller, some large schools like Harrison Park would have gotten even bigger. The problem that needed to be addressed first conceptually was catchment areas. King's doesn't have an adequate one. Harrison Park apparently has too big of one. So we, we came to the conclusion that we needed to look at a whole district rebalancing. And that's what PPS has started to do, and I believe this is the third one. What we recommended, or at least some of us, we didn't have a full recommendation on this, but what we talked about was that it should be done all in one process because of this domino effect kind of thing. But due to budget limitations that we're all too familiar with, PPS didn't think they had adequate staff to staff a whole citywide discussion on 1,000 different boundary changes going on at once. And while we respect that, we're looking now and seeing, maybe it's time to step back and rethink that and really do that whole system-wide piece first. Because, for example, Saban's boundary now feels like it should be fixed after going through a process. And yet, we're right next door with King at all. And gee, maybe a better solution might have been a King-Saban adjustment and a Saban, some other school adjustment so that Saban has an adequate catchment area and King does as well. But you're kind of precluded from doing that at this point when you do a step-by-step Third, yeah, I think we've already said it. We don't think it's appropriate to have different transfer rules for different parts of PPS. We just want to make clear that we need to have a whole system, same rules for everybody. Fourth, we want to point out a contrast. When Saban was in the process, they were balanced up. They were allowed to have a larger area to draw in more students to build their program. That seems in sharp contrast to at least some of the proposals that are out now for the Jefferson Cluster schools. Finally, we want to make the point, and Neely alluded to it, but I want to specifically call out one factor. Transfers out of a school are oftentimes initially a symptom of an issue. And one of the symptoms, one of the issues it's a symptom of is poor leadership in a school. We know that even if a school has good leadership now, if there's a history, that's part of that reputation, getting over that reputation that can take years, or current poor leadership, we know that has an impact on catchment rates. That's a core issue that really needs to be dealt with, that hasn't been dealt with in the 15 years that I've been doing this stuff. So I'll stop there and just want to say in closing, serving on SACIT has been a real privilege. It's a group of really committed, critical thinkers looking at the whole system. Sarah, Talitha, Dave, Allison, Nisha are here. Tracy isn't, Jeff isn't, but it's an incredible group of hard-working people. So I'd recommend the experience to just about anybody. Thank you both.
Thank you. Okay. So we only have a little bit more, and then we really want to hear your comments. We're going to, we thought we would quickly run through, and I think Harriet, will you, will you, because this, you know this so well.
I'm laughing because I didn't, I wasn't talking.
And then I said, but Harriet. I'd like Harriet to be able to, well, let's just take a look at this. So you're going to see three pieces of information, and you may be familiar with them, but we thought that they were some of the most critical pieces. Go ahead.
This is the current enrollment by grade in, across the Jefferson Cluster. As you can see, there are, there, in the first column in the white bar is the total number of students in the building. And then it's broken out first kindergarten through the, kindergarten through the eighth grade in the, in the schools. So with Beech at the top, Woodlawn at the bottom with 419, going across to 23 in eighth grade, 42 seventh grade, 39 sixth grade, 55 fifth grade, 41 fourth grade, 43 third grade, 59 second grade, 43 first grade, and 73 in kindergarten. As you can see, the unevenness as you go across those grades, which creates some issues that we have been wrestling with where you can be both too small and too large at the same time. So the current school condition and resources, this past year, additional resources in terms of staffing, they all got their straight allocation based on the total numbers that are in those columns. They were given an allocation for kindergarten that's outside of those columns. They have, that comes from Title I, and that's set aside in a different funding source. So 1 through 8 received funding across based on the total number. This year, additional resources were provided for, to help them do some things programmatically. We have what we call the core program. And so we, for them to be able to offer the core program, which is just basically the mathematics, the art, not, not art, excuse me, mathematics, language arts, science, social studies, just the basic program. And then some enrichment so that you could have planning periods inside of the day, so they would have to have that as well. Oakley-Green received an additional 2.5, two and a half FTE. Vernon, 1.19. Part of that is the IB allotment that goes with the IB program. So they have a .5 for their IB coordinator and .5 for their Spanish teacher as well. So that's actually just .19, that's above their regular allocation. King got .96 and Woodlawn .27 in order to meet the core program needs. In addition, after we got the pieces back, sometimes you have a piece of FTE that is too small to be usable. In other words, if you don't get at least a quarter of an FTE, which is a half-time or 2.0, which is a one day of a teacher, then typically there's very little that you can potentially do with that FTE. So those schools in the cluster that had little pieces like .11, .08, .04, something like that, that they couldn't use to actually hire a full-time person, they collected them up and gifted them to Oakley-Green to additionally bump up the FTE that they had at Oakley-Green this year as well. So also, those schools that had classes that were too small at the upper grades in world language and in the higher-level mathematics received itinerant FTE from the central office additional funds. Okay? So if you looked at the crowding situation and we left things, put the pause on the button, Chief Joseph, even with the K, the kindergarten transfer limitation, would still need one to two modular classrooms next year. Fabian needs one to two classrooms next year. And if a location is not selected for access this year, whether it's in the Jefferson Cluster or somewhere else in the district, one to two modular classrooms would also be needed at Saban to accommodate those populations.
Okay. And just, just as a closing remark, that that's the end of data we have prepared. And And the changes that we talked about with transfer policy, at least in light of how we've applied transfers in the past, would not lead to substantial changes at these schools by next fall that might mitigate some of the conditions that we've described. So transfer policy changes now for September twenty thirteen may not be enough to mitigate what we've showed you.
Okay?
Does it matter if you were first last time? You're the one who had questions?
Everyone's gonna have questions. So I want to go back, just want to start by appreciating your summary that you offered at the beginning. I thought that was a pretty good and accurate summary of themes that I've heard as well going to as many, and hearing, we try to recap and go to the different meetings and share with each other and read everything that we get as well. So I appreciate that a lot, that you put that up there. I also appreciate the background and the summary of the transfer policy and kind of the changes that have been made recently. And really appreciate, of course, SACIT, all your service and your coming and sharing your thoughts. I'm hoping we're gonna get copies, both of this and of SACIT's report so that we can, that would be great. And I know you're working each day to do stuff, but just wanted to make sure we got that for reference. So just to start with, so question around, appreciate this memo with the, so is all this enrollment and FTE resource information discussed at the, I'm sorry, I forget the exact name of the Enrollment Stakeholder Committee over the fall, the Enrollment Balancing Committee?
Are you talking the Staffing Committee? Is that the one?
The, the community.
The Planning Committee?
The Planning Committee.
No, we did not. Not as, go ahead.
Not the, I think the Staffing Resource one, those decisions that were made this fall and the extra FTE would maybe be the only piece that, when I looked at that, that we didn't explicitly call up. But all the information about school size by grade level and where our hotspots are have been a common refrain. We believe we've tried to make it a common refrain from, from back in the summer right through.
And so I think the resource piece in particular is pretty key here and also just even putting it beyond this cluster, but putting it in a district-wide context because I think the perception, I think while there have been a lot of things the district has done wrong in this cluster, I think underinvesting, we have, we are underinvested just as a state and in general as a system in our students. But I think actually in terms, when I look at the data, we actually have a relatively high investment per student in the Jefferson Cluster and I think that's really important to explain that and to clarify that. So for example, and one outstanding example, just through the School Improvement Grant, is at King. I think a gentleman asked earlier about why the per student number was extremely high there and that would be, you see the five point five three FTE in the far right, and I believe that, is that the student, School Improvement Grant? Which is a temporary, and so I know lots of folks are aware of that, but I think not everyone is. Just to highlight the importance of really getting down into the details of these so that people understand the context. But I do appreciate, appreciate seeing this. One piece, are you gonna be able to talk about, so this is this past year, and are you gonna be talking about what, I mean, I know we're, knowing we're facing more cuts next year, have you done any mapping about what additional subsidy would have to look like or how, and I realize the staffing formula is extremely complex?
I do know that they're working on the staffing formula and some potential changes in terms of how we distribute that, and Sue Ann could speak to that better than I. But that's why we presented it as it is currently stands. If there were no changes in any of those, then you would need at a minimum, if there was a pause on all of the activity in the enrollment balancing, that sort of supplemental FTE being made available to those schools, for them to be able to maintain the program as it currently exists.
So no, no cuts plus extra added from other places?
Right.
Just, you know, because of the, the way that, that we continue to frame, you know, the issues is based on, on the parameters that are there already in regards to the allocation FTE. And I guess the question that comes to mind, you know, because we, we have to look at it, is, is the, one, whether we adequately actually resourcing the schools based on the student population and the, and the needs that the student population has, you know, whereas in these schools or others. And, and I think that's the question, I mean, I think because otherwise then, then we're looking at the, at a different frame in regards to, you know, and I heard my colleague express it here, you know, Ruth, looking at it in regards to a subsidy versus a inadequate resource question of actually meeting the needs of those students and stuff. I mean, not, not to.
No, but I think it's, I guess, I think what I'm saying is there's a difference between providing additional resource, which I think we absolutely should, and so thank you for needing to clarify that, versus, so we have different categories of additional, so the socioeconomic status, additional FTE, Title One and other pieces. So yes, we absolutely should be investing more per student, but my concern is if we're in a place where we have programs that are so small that we're taking away from other vulnerable students who also need assistance because we're trying to, when I say subsidize, I mean, it's because it's a program that is too small to.
So I'll, so I'm gonna ask Sue Ann to talk about this because we have a district staffing team that looks at our staffing formulas every year, and in the last two years, there has been deep discussion about how do you differentiate and weight for needs of students. And last year, and the same team is together this year so that they're really continuing to move forward, that conversation of trying to figure out how do we do this and have it show up in our staffing formula in a way that makes sense, that really puts weighting and is differentiating by student need. So Sue Ann can maybe speak a little bit to that. Because I will say, like, when we keep saying there's not just one lever, like, and we don't get to just pull one and it will make it all happen, it is about leadership, it's about differentiating resources, it's about having the right, I mean, it's a, it's a whole fabric of response here that no one is the silver bullet. So anyway, just, it would be useful to hear a little bit, I think, about the staffing team.
So we are a committee of twenty-eight district representatives and as well as school principals. And so what we're working on right now is using, looking at, so, so in the past, we've had a staffing ratio that would say if you have twenty-five or twenty-six students in grades one through five, that's equivalent to one teacher FTE. What we're realizing is that using an equal formula for all schools has not gotten us to a place of equity. And so we're looking at what are the many factors that we want to take into account in terms of making adjustments to those staffing formulas? In the past, we have had small pockets that allowed us for some differentials for schools, for instance, Title One funding. But those funds, of course, has, have continued to decline. So fewer of our schools are receiving those funds and the funds they're receiving are also coming from a smaller pot from the federal government. That's true in some of the other federally funded pots of money as well. And so as we are looking at a differential for our staffing formula, we're at the beginning of that process, so really the next five weeks are really critical period of time for us to do that work before we make recommendations to the superintendent prior to her budget recommendation to you. But it's important to know that, of course, we start with a smaller pot of money overall in terms of the general fund this year. So we have both commitments to fulfill in terms of leveraging our funds differently to look at areas of need in our city and in our schools, in this cluster as in others, but also sort of starting from, you know, our starting line is farther back than it's been, you know, ever in recent memory. So, so the dual challenge we face there.
All the questions, that's all the information. If there are more questions, then we can move straight into comments and have a discussion through where we have some work.
So the, I'm sorry, the Fabian portables were, those were already a part of the plan. I know in both scenarios, we sort of leave Fabian alone.
Right.
Right. Okay.
With, with funding linked to the, the construction bond?
Right.
Right, not out of the general fund, just wanted to.
Oh, the, the portables are.
Yes.
Okay. That's good to know, thank you.
Well, this is a quiet group tonight.
Well, are you saying we're gonna stop asking questions?
No, I mean, unless you, you have some, some, some questions specific to staff, I would like to hear more in regards to what you already heard in terms of where you're at, right, then continue to ask discussions of the staff and then just use that time that way. So, because I think that'll provide better guidance for the, for the superintendent in regards to feedback. I mean, we all been, you know, we've been at different meetings. We heard this information before, we got some added new information, both from the superintendent committee on enrollment and transfer. You know, what else do we need at this point in time to be, or what thinking do you all have at this point in time in regards to this proposal that is before us? And there'll be another proposal that'll be for us in this superintendent's point it out. So this is not like the final thing, but it'll be, I think, important for yous to get a sense of what you're thinking is at this point in time.
I'll, I'll start. That I really appreciate SACIT's presentation and the information that staff have given us and all the effort that various community members have brought to us. And I guess while I know that the budget's gonna be decreasing, it's encouraging to hear us looking at how do we differentiate, how do we put that policy into real effects, knowing that literally as I visit schools, every school I go into talks about how difficult it is with the resources they have to do what we're asking them. It's really quite disheartening, whether I'm at a rich school or a school that's not rich, however you define that. That being said, I guess I, what I've really appreciated about this process is the engagement. And I think there is an opportunity here for us to work with our community to find a way to, to resolve this. We have to do some kind of movement to address the, the short-term issues that we're gonna have about not offering, because for me, a priority is offering to Core Program. So we're gonna have to do something about that, but I don't know that we need to make a wholesale change at this point, or what those wholesale changes would be. And again, I think that the enrollment transfer policy can be part of that discussion, a bigger discussion. And it was great, actually, to hear the context, to hear, you know, in two thousand and two, we were declining enrollment district, which is a very different conversation than if we're growing. That, it's, it's just, oh, right, of course, there were problems back then that people were doing the best they could to address them. So I guess that's where I'm at, is that I've appreciated the engagement of the community. I think that oftentimes, we as a district feel like people are waiting for us to come up with the answer. People are waiting for us to know. And I think it's very healthy for us to come out and say, here's what we've done, here's how we process it, now we need that feedback. And I think this is a good opportunity to pull that through and say, it's really not just us and our decision, it's us as a community. How do we grow our community? If neighborhood schools are what we value, how do we do that in a way that also allows the families that says neighborhood schools is not my choice, to give them some ability to do that, so.
Yeah, I could just kind of echo that. I mean, I've already shared this with the superintendent, but I guess we're, just in the broadest sense, to me, there's, well, we do need to make some kind of short-term change to make sure that we're, we need to provide a stronger program, particularly the King and Oakley Green students of the middle grades are not, are not getting what they need. And it's not, doesn't seem, yes, we absolutely need to continue to differentiate resources, but to do it in a way that's effective and is gonna provide a good program. And just hearing, you know, from families, for instance, again, is awful, we said this many times, but as, as awful as last year's closure of Humboldt was, to hear families talk about what they're getting now at Boise Elliott-Humboldt combined and that they, that that's working for them speaks a lot to that, that, but can we do it in a way that is not the way we did it last year, which I think everyone agrees, it's not good. So I'm, I guess I'm hoping that the superintendent will be able to come up with some kind of limited, short-term solution combined with a longer term, really a more holistic, because we went in, this was a limited to the enrollment balancing, and I think we need to own some accountability for that too, the directive we gave, and that we allowed it to be a limited, based on, oh, here's the series of things that we're doing, rather than realizing that we should have stepped, actually, we should have stepped back, you know, a decade ago to have a holistic, but. So if there's a way to, and I'm, you know, restorative justice, other means of us trying to come together and really start anew together, but bringing in the enrollment and transfer policy, the transfer policy, you know, how can we do a community-based, led, district-supported outgrowth and marketing plan? And I know that some efforts have happened, you know, they asked me about Vernon and asked me about Humboldt, you know, we've done some of that, creating banners, but we need to reinvigorate that, maybe bring in new partners to help with the funding for that, really engage, I mean, there's so many, so many folks who have been so engaged in this around the, the takeaway of this process, but can we reengage in a positive way about that growth and, and really dealing with the issues of race and class, but also dealing with the leadership issues and everything else? I mean, people have really well articulated those. And again, I appreciate how staff has really been visible about summarizing those. It's like your summary could be a starting point for, okay, how do we restart this? So I guess I'm, I'm hoping when we get, whatever resolution we end up with, that it's coupled with a kind of a charge for, let's start right now or as soon as possible on that kind of long-term, long-term look. And that's, that's kind of just enough, you know, just at the higher level, my thoughts.
Director Morton or Knowles?
Yeah, I think, I think I'm, I asked for this last week and I know that others have asked for this, but I'd like to see an equity impact assessment on either of these options or any option that is, that is presented and certainly any option that's rec, a recommendation from the superintendent. I think one thing that we have to be really clear about is that our intent and we're, we're obligated, based on our racial equity, educational equity policy, to avoid doing harm, particularly to those populations that are already struggling. And that we have an obligation, I mean, we, we've had our, our Achievement Compact folks recommend pretty, pretty high targets for kids of color, and I'd like to see us reach those targets and doing any action that would, that would impair or, or create barriers, additional barriers to that. I think some of those are maybe non-traditional barriers like transportation, like the availability of, of access to a neighborhood, a neighborhood program that you may not, a kid may not be as likely to, to have regular attendance if their fam, you know, if both parents are working multiple jobs or whatever the case may be. So I think, I think I would really be interested in seeing what kind of impact we're looking at on these schools. You know, and I, I'm, part of my hesitation is, is in my head, trying to make sense of what I'm seeing in terms of student transfer in the Jefferson Cluster and seeing that nearly fifty percent of the kids are finding alternatives. And some of those are within other Jefferson neighborhood schools, so let's say a little over sixty percent are attending within that cluster. But how do we, how do we go about, strategically go about bringing those kids back to the cluster? And I'm very aware that there's a domino effect to that as well. But we also have, we have, also have schools around the cluster that are, are around the district that could probably, could probably be okay and withstand their programming if they, if they lost some of those students, some of them. So I, I think, you know, I, whatever short-term options that might exist, I think I would be interested in seeing. So how do we, how do we actually reach that percentage of capture within our cluster that gets us to, to the next point so we can have the conversation around enrollment and transfer, so we can have the conversation and the planning around a middle option within the cluster, so we can have the conversation and work with the community around how to continue to attract more and more students who live in the neighborhoods to go to their neighborhood schools.
Can I add just two more points to what I was saying before that I forgot to mention from my thoughts, just, just to kind of reiterate what I tried to say last week, I think, but did, did a really poor job of, so I'll see if. So, I'll see if I can do any better. What I was trying to say about the comparison around the district, I wasn't saying that I think we should be going around and closing every school around the district. But I think the, the point just being that unless we are about to embark on a series of sweeping changes, we don't wanna have a double standard here. And I think that, that we know that, that we have seen in this district, in this cluster, the negative impact of making sweeping changes. So, again, that's where I'm coming out. Is there a way that we can somehow address the very real problems in under enrollment without creating more harm and damage? And that's what I'm looking for. And I guess my concern with the current options is that they are quite sweeping in nature. And there's pieces of them, like the shared campus, the middle college concept, the junior middle college concept, putting access with King, that, that really caused me a lot of concern and hesitation. And then the other piece is just coming out of, there's been a lot of amazing meetings and testimony, but just hearing particularly from special education students and their families and their stories and the, the real success at Woodlawn in terms of the continuity and stability and the outstanding team they have there, and that children who have been uprooted many, many times over the last many years have finally found some stability there. And that was really important to hear, and I share that with everybody. And, and I know staff was there as well, hearing those stories. So, I just wanted, because I think, you know, again, as we heard, you know, all too often, we wanna make sure that, that the special education families are put front and center in this as well. So, I just wanted to say that.
I mean, you two are the ones that are remaining there.
There you go. Excuse me, so I also have to thank staff for the work that they've done and Sackett for the report that you gave to us. And also to all the people in the community who have been out at these meetings, taking up a Saturday.
Tuesday.
Really, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Yes, true. But I really appreciate those who are coming out and helping us by telling us how you feel about what's, how you feel about what's going on in your cluster, but also about how you feel about the different options that we're looking at. So, just a couple of things that I've been thinking about. What a, everybody's been talking about dominos, I look at it more like a jigsaw puzzle. Just seems like there's so many different pieces, and how can we make them all fit together? I'm a little concerned about a short-term fix and then another long-term fix. And the reason for my concern over that is just the continuous change in the Jefferson cluster. I'd like us to figure out what we think is best and then move forward and let that lie and give the community a chance to get behind that and strengthen those schools. So, I'm a little concerned about something short or long.
Can I just, I think for me, the long-term fix isn't so much as, oh, let's make a sweeping change and reconfigure everything. It's how can we rebuild and address all the intertwined issues of race and class and, and program size, all in the continuing budget decline, all the other layers. So, that's what I'm thinking.
There were others who mentioned long and short. Do you wanna go ahead, Matt?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I think that makes, that makes sense. But I, but I also think, particularly with, with this cluster, that we've sold the, let's make, let's make a definitive decision. And that definitive decision has, has oftentimes resulted in cuts. And then we've come back years later, or maybe not years later, and said, okay, we needed to make another definitive decision. So, I would, I would say that we're, if, if the pattern of decisions like that held to long-term, then I would be more inclined to say, yeah. But I'm, I don't see that happening. And I don't see, I mean, some of the Sackett comments of the pattern that we've seen, probably if the community sees more cuts, isn't going to say, oh, now, now the cluster's good. Now we can, now we need to send our kids there.
Well, I wasn't gonna talk about cuts, but you go.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that, that short, you know, it's the better to, better to kind of make that tough decision now and then we'll move forward. Well, the moving forward, the pattern has been, we'll move forward to more, more reduction or more cuts and more consolidation and so on.
Do you want to continue, Director Knowles?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Well, we're having a discussion, so I'm fine with people, other people chiming in, so it works okay for me. And again, I, I'm not, I don't disagree with you. I, I am hopeful that we're going to come to a decision that will last for a while, so we don't have to. And I'm not talking about cuts or anything like that. So, I'm, in fact, if you, you know, I was looking at this, this one over the weekend and noticing how green it all is over in those lower grades. And it really seems to me that, that this is kind of a, we just need a short-term, there's the short-term fix.
Right, it's a long time.
To help us over this hump, because we can't, we can't not do something for those children who are over in the yellow side. They deserve a robust program as much as the students who are coming along. So, we can't do nothing, because then those students who are in those middle school grades are not receiving what they, what they truly deserve. So, some of the other things that I've been wrestling with, and you guys have heard some of these before, is I'm a proponent more of the K-8 model than I am of the middle school model. That is because, for me, I've looked at the research and the data from our district, and it shows that the students are doing better in the K-8s than they did in middle school. I think the issue for us is having a strong middle school with options for students and electives and things like that. So, if we have enough students in those middle schools in those six, eight grades, then we can have a strong program for them, similar to what, not as robust in the elective area as what you see in a middle school, but still strong. And, and then they would have all the other advantages of being in that K-8 in addition to having that. So, I'm, I'm a pretty strong proponent of the K-8 model. I also, again, appreciate the work of Sackett. I think that some of the work that we can do is just around minor adjustments to boundaries, to add some, to some schools and, and for our schools that are overcrowded, to relieve them of that overcrowding. All of the schools that I, again, going through the stuff this weekend, noticed that all of the schools are big enough to be K-8s, except for Chief Joseph. And Oakley Green is so close to Chief Joseph, and it's big enough to be a K-8. So, I am looking at that thinking, well, maybe that's a possibility. Maybe there's a wholesale shift there, because that is big enough and so on. I also had a great meeting on Thursday with the Access Parents at Saban and was really impressed by this group and their concern for making sure that students who are exceptionally gifted and have so much difficulty achieving in our regular classrooms have an opportunity to be successful as well. And I was also impressed by their interest in moving into the Jefferson cluster, because they realized how their own school is not very diverse. And they think that, they thought, and I agree with them, that they're, you know, maybe those parents of color just don't, don't know. Or I know we've had some issues before with, especially black boys ending up in B classrooms instead of, maybe, maybe their real issue is that they're just exceptionally gifted and we're not recognizing that. So, I, so I'm kind of, I'm interested in what's going on at Access. And I, you know, we all received at least a couple of letters suggesting Access at Jefferson, which is an interesting.
Jefferson High, at Jefferson High School, yeah.
Jefferson High School, which is kind of an interesting concept. And so, I'm also throwing that into the mix of everything else. And I also wanted to mention on Saturday that, that I also was really moved by the testimony of the Woodlawn teacher, who was talking about his special education students and the difficulty they have in constantly moving. What else? And I also, again, with Sackett, some of the suggestions that you guys have been making, I've been making for a couple of years. So, it just takes time for these things to move along. And I also agree that we probably made an error by not moving forward with doing work on our transfer policy before we got into this. But at the same time, if we do do some changes around just boundaries, I truly think that we should make an exception to our policy, because we probably won't get to it by then, and make sure that those changes that we're making in boundaries are immediate and not strung out over thirteen years, because by that time, we may not even need them anymore. So.
So, wait, by immediate, do you mean everybody, if you're in a new boundary? So, you're not grandfathered into the old school? You move to the immediately to the new school?
And those, you know, those are smaller changes than some of the great big changes we've been considering. So, I, you know, it's just one of, another thought for how we might handle that.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you recommending that if we make an exception, we wouldn't, if we change boundaries, we wouldn't make that exception this year just for Jefferson Cluster? Or would it be just for this cluster, to say that if we move your boundary, everybody has to move now?
Unless we get to the policy, and that would be pretty quick.
But wouldn't that create another whole sweeping round of upheavals just because of the kind of, the people have transferred all over within the cluster? I, I just, I don't know. We hadn't had that discussion, so.
Right, I, I mean, I'm just, it's just a thought that's been going through my head about, you know, is there a way to do this, so that if we do those, if we do just do some smaller boundary changes rather than closing schools or doing those kinds of things to bolster these other schools, the only way it will work with a boundary change is if we make them immediate.
But you could also couple it to that long-term plan and talk about changing the boundaries and seeing the growth in the lower grades.
Oh, yes.
And coupling it with outreach. I mean, I, I mean, literally, let's go door to door and talk, you know, we talked, we heard from the, the meeting we went to, the King mom who said that she, there were thirty kids in her block and only two were going to King. Well, let's go to that block and, you know. Bring along Carol and some teacher, I don't know, whatever.
Meet Superintendent Smith.
We'll bring along some King parents and students, and they can tell them how great King is. Or Kim, she could tell them, I think, Kim Patterson, the principal. She, she's a good, good cheerleader for her school.
I just, I guess I just wanted to give voice, because there was a parent also that stood up on Saturday. They had talked about, she had lived in the Jefferson cluster for a long time. And she was an African-American woman, and stood up and said, where the heck has everybody been? This has been happening to us for the past twenty years. And so, a lot of people have talked about courageous conversations, when are you gonna do equity? And using all of that, what I consider destructive language, in the sense that it's defensive and accusatory. So, I guess as I look at, at our compass, if I look at this problem intellectually, makes total sense. Gotta close some schools, you gotta get the right number of kids, you gotta change some leadership. But every other quadrant of that compass puts me in a place that this cluster, these students, this has been happening to. When I hear Director Morton talk about another sweeping change being done to people, that's the cycle I wanna change.
Right.
And I can support it in the sense that I, again, morally and philosophically believe, wholeheartedly, that the fact of the matter is that our destinies are tied to each other. So, what, if we can figure out a process that works in this cluster, it will work everywhere else. And we have to figure out a way to do this differently, while still not ignoring the fact that we have some schools that are gonna need portables or some other solution, or they're just too small to give kids the quality education that they deserve every single day, so.
So, I think the first thing we need to do to stop this, like, cycle is by not closing any schools. This go around, that'd be the immediate solution. And then with that, we need to have further conversations of how do we rebuild this district? I think what Ruth was touching on, sort of advertising our schools and selling them back to the community so that people wanna go to those schools. And I think some of the public testimony tonight touched on that, that we need to rebuild the community. And that's kind of the conversation we should be having right now. And especially after we get through all of this enrollment balancing, that's a conversation that continues, that needs to continue to happen. It doesn't just stop until another round of cuts and another round of school closures. So, I think following up with that after this round of enrollment balancing, and then I'd say, don't close any schools in this cluster if we're desperate to close schools. I think some of the public testimony tonight talked about plenty of other schools in this district that also don't have the high enrollment that could be consolidated. So, I think there is a solution to be found in the Jefferson cluster that doesn't require closing a school. And then we need to continue after that to rebuild this community and not just wait up till the next time that we need to close another school.
Thank you. Can we go back a couple of slides?
I'm sorry.
Can we go back a couple of slides? I'm just trying to get certain language that was there.
Sure, which ones are you looking for?
The, the, I think you, there was some mention in regards to the, the whole transfer part of it.
The bar graph?
Hang on, hang on for a second.
Okay.
It was more in regards to, I think, some wording that you have in regards to the idea was to provide opportunities rather than look at the outcome of that, or something to that effect.
Our assessment that policy back then emphasized equality in individual transfer choices, not equity in transfer outcomes, is that?
It's like focused on a fair lottery system, district-wide versus.
Building a system, right.
Versus what it would do.
Versus what it would do.
What it would do to us.
So, I, I think the same, I mean, I was struck by that, by the way, and I, I thank you for the wording on that. Because I think in some way, that's the challenge that we face right now. And, and looking at it in regards to the equity and regards to the outcomes. Because in some ways, I mean, we're still looking at transferring students within the current proposals. And so, what is gonna be the equitable outcome of that? And, and that hasn't necessarily been articulated quite well or framed. The, the other part, I guess, you know, it was something that was raised, and I, I sort of have mentioned this before to, to folks, is that sometimes I think we try to, I, I understand what was articulated in regards to the enrollment transfer, by the way, in regards to strengthening the middle grades. But what I see also in regards to what, what has been happening also is that, and, and I see that in other organizations, is that sometimes we, we try to change a, a, a structure and not deal with the issues of personnel. And, and so, to me, you know, this, because of listening to some of the comments at, at some of the meetings, that we are boarding some of those issues and, you know, perhaps looking at resolving them this way. I think that that's, you know, if we're, if we are trying to stay with what the superintendent said last week of regards to looking at the, the interests of students versus that of adults, then we need to deal with issues of personnel to deal with adults and, and, and address those things. I'm not gonna name anybody, by the way, right now, because that's on my rope. But the other part, I think, getting back in regards to the impact, and, and this is, I, I think, in regards to not only the outcomes, but in regard, well, the impact in regards to the schools as, as changes are proposed. Because there are some schools where they have been able to build a cohesive community or a good working unit in, in, in buildings, and this will impact it, impact it in many ways. One, because, you know, teachers move with students, other personnel moves with students. And there would, there'll be a learning curve, but also, you know, the fact that, that there are different, some people have been here longer than others, and that, and, and that building, there might be, you know, coming in and, you know, and, and there'll be a new team that gets built. So, if there are actually cuts in personnel later, the folks that, that have longer seniority that just came into that building this past year would, would get to stay. And, you know, that culture is not yet changed in regards to that. So, you know, there's a, a readjustment, but I, I think those are the things that we are not looking at. And it'll be, I think, important to keep in mind as we, as we, as we look at impact. The other part, and, and again, because this is, I'd be remiss if I don't raise this, because people continue to kind of harp on it out there in the, in the community, is the, the whole finance of it, I mean, the, the, the resources and the, and the money. You know, we are moving into a, a period that there's gonna be less resources. That's the argument for, for, for the pressing for change. But yet, there hasn't been necessarily a, a good assessment done in regards to what is, what is the impact economically? In regards to, one, what, what has been saving? Our experience has been, there is no saving. And two, that because of the, of the new things, like, I'll take Director Knowles wholesale move, that they might be, if you increase, like, say, you know, at Oakley Green, they might need to. might need to have higher investment in regards to the, the redesign of that building to deal with earlier grades in particular, but also like in terms of the cafeteria, you know, in terms of the use of that, given that you're looking at greater numbers. So, again, those are things that I, I think, at least for me, I think would be important to, to address before we move on. Because one of the things that happened, I think, in, in our move last year with, you know, in terms of the closure of Humboldt and Boise Elliott, I mean, even, I think, in, in regards to new proposals that were articulated, I mean, there, there we were talking about, again, potential move with those students. And I think that's, that's the concern that at least I hear from my colleagues here, that if we are going to do it, we, we need to have some, like, real reassurances in, in ourselves, at least be confident that this is not going to happen again to some of those, to some of those students right away, kind of deal. I mean, eventually, you know, changes will, will need to take place, because there is a growth and there is some, some readjustment. The other thing that I'm thankful for, by the way, is the explanation that was made in terms of the modulators. I was, I was looking at, wow, why is Fabian getting some, some modulators when I see Chief Joseph and some of the other schools needing them? And we have not necessarily allocated funds for that, because, so in some ways, you know, partly the decisions from the bond, you know, that, that created that opportunity for Fabian, but what's our, what's our, our own story in regards to what, where the investments are?
Can I drop us a question following on that? So do you know, Superintendent Smith, do you have a sense, I know that these two initial options didn't have the level of, you know, financial costing detail and what, you know, like what would need to be remodeled or whatever else. Are you going to be able to provide that with your option that you come back with? Just in terms of, you know, some of the, the level of detail in terms of implementation or how?
You know, we'll work to identify what we can in a broad stroke way, given that it's going to happen in the next two days.
Well, yeah, but I mean, there would be remodeling. Would there be remodeling?
Yeah, so, and I will say, I'll just reinforce what was just spoken, is that it costs us to make these transitions. They're not like, it doesn't save us money, this has ended up being like the Boise Elliott Humboldt, cost us money, we had to do things to the building to actually accommodate the, the students moving to the new building. However, it was about access to program for kids, so, I mean, and, and trade-offs, and clearly, yes, we'll point out where it will be, I don't know how, how.
Yeah, I don't mean like we're going to change this.
But broad stroke, yes.
Yeah, but there will be, this, this would involve some.
Have this kind of financial impact, yes.
Right.
And I think that, you know, one of the things that I hear from people in regards to that, is, is not only looking at the numbers, but having some, I guess, there is, perhaps not as confident of the board that, that we have the, the expertise on, on the board to actually review financials, to have the, the budget review committee actually look at some of those, those figures and come back and, and make some, some statements. Again, I mean, I think it's important to have some independent bodies, but I, I think that there's also, I think, a level of, of scrutiny that the board also puts it out. So it's not that. So I, again, I mean, I think that, that we have heard, I think, as a whole, I mean, I think some, some, some serious hesitation to move forward, you know, without knowing the, the, the potential impact of those things. And also, I think that the identifying or, or recognizing the fact that historically this, this, this cluster has been highly impacted. In addition to that, I think, you know, from what I heard from Director Bilal, is that there, there is a, a question, I think, before us, not only as a district in terms, in terms of the board, in terms of the whole question of, of using a racial equity lens and how that gets applied in, in this instance at this, at this point in time. And also a call for the community in regards to looking at, you know, the, the, the issue of race as people decide or not to, to enroll their students in the neighborhood school. Because, you know, that was what I was hearing from folks from Vernon a few years back, that they were not, they were moving into the neighborhood and not enrolling their children in that neighborhood school. So, and again, I don't think that it's a community, we have engaged in that conversation in regards to what is that all about, you know, versus our, I think, our, one of our representatives from, from the enrollment transfer committee mentioned is that, you know, all reputations are, you know, die hard. And there, there is, I think, a need for us to recognize the efforts, I think, that, that staff are making in these schools and this cluster, and not lose sight of that, because there are some dedicated staff that are trying their best within the context of those limited resources. Mind you, as I mentioned earlier, there is also a need to address some personnel issues in that cluster also. So.
So a couple more questions. One is really kind of comparing, looking at, looking at whatever option might exist as, sort of, what would it look like three to five years out? And comparing to, you know, another option of, I don't want to say doing nothing, but another option of, of maybe more modest, modest adjustment, three to five years out. Where, what's the gap at that point? Because I, you know, again, I know we've all referred to it in one way or another, but the green, the green and the lower grades and, you know, the, three to five years out, it looks like there are some, yeah, there, it's a different scenario. So that's, that's one thing. The other thing, and this is, you know, I hope this isn't a rhetorical question, it might be, but it's.
Don't you get to decide whether it's rhetorical?
I guess if they choose not to answer, it's more rhetorical. But.
Okay, we've decided it's a rhetorical question. We've decided.
Decision made.
It'll be full of rhetoric, I know that. No, the, so, so here's probably a question around equity. One is, any changes now affect students that are within the cluster now? Any changes now will not affect students who might live within the catchment area but are not currently attending schools within the cluster. That's an interesting issue for me. Should we make our decisions based on the catchment of the cluster versus on who is just within the cluster, going to those, in, in cluster schools?
Did you want an answer tonight? Can I, can I just say that?
So, we don't have an answer, but we've had similar rhetorical questions shared throughout this process, and we're with you in that it's important question. Is that fair?
Oh, yeah.
And they've been rhetorical questions.
So sort of the.
It's a large, it's one of our largest catchment areas, and, yeah.
And actually, Director Regan and Director Sargent, I'm sorry that they're still not part of this conversation, because I really value their voices, but forwarded some information asking that similar question, and I hope that's part of the larger community, community-based process, if we can get to that, about how do we really look at, I mean, Director Gonzalez said this actually probably about a month ago, that in this cluster lies our greatest opportunity. If fifty percent of our kids aren't coming, then how do we bring them back? And that is really not going to be a decision that we five are able to do. We can make decisions to, again, create the situation, but we're going to need community. And so our decisions hopefully reflect what that, what our community would want, and that, I think, will bring them back.
I just want to say one thing, though, that I said earlier today, is that you actually though have two communities that you have to deal with. This is much more complex, because if you look at the, they have quite a challenge here, because what you have in terms of the back and forth and back and forth of a certain part of the population that doesn't live within the cluster, historically, the African-American population, whether they live within the cluster or in the numbers as they currently reference it, seek to come in. So if you shut down transfers, that population which views this as their, as their community, whether they live there or not, are by definition excluded from returning to where they see that to be their community. In addition, you have the community that actually resides within the catchment area that is also the community voice that you have to also wonder about. So there's a, there's a multiple perspective piece here that doesn't necessarily exist in other parts of town, so that it, it does end up having to have some complexity there, especially when you have, I've got that slide where sixty-six percent of the kids or something like that are actually switching back and forth within the actual Jefferson Cluster of the African-American population. So shutting that down means potentially they're either excluded outside the cluster or included into wherever in the cluster that, for whatever reason, they decided that's not the school they want it to be. And so, just thought I'd throw that little piece of, of complexity that, that's, that is something I can think about when I'm looking at some of these answers, and that's why it isn't a rhetorical question, but it is one that actually makes it a lot harder question to answer.
Right. But your, your scenario, it could be, you know, just the right number leaving Oakley, the Oakley catchment area and attending another school in the area that had, that's maybe in the green, or maybe we need to get portables for. I mean, it could be that option, and I guess we don't have that information now. You don't understand that.
We actually do. I think what you're saying is that in an over-enrolled school like a Chief Joseph or a Beach, might be gaining just enough students from Oakley Green.
Right, I'm talking about intercluster.
Oh, yes, yes. Right, right.
Right.
So, we're about ten minutes over the time, even, I mean, we're actually more, because we saved some time earlier. Any pressing questions at this point in time or pressing comments? You asked your questions.
I have to ask many questions.
I don't have any questions. I guess I just want to acknowledge again, and Director Atkins mentioned it, that, that we make sure that we own, that, that we put these parameters on the enrollment balancing part. And so, I appreciate it, colleagues, I think Director Knoll, you also said this, that maybe this is the right time for us to step back and, and figure out whether we were, were right with our parameters.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And actually, I'm just going to appreciate in, just even the trajectory of the conversation here, and I, I can feel the multiple perspectives, like, really changing the nature of the conversation over the course of this entire endeavor. And as, as different people have entered the process, the conversation has taken on different dimensions, which is, I think, exactly what needs to happen with what it is we're trying to tackle. And it is almost like different people have woken up and popped in, and then, and the conversation keeps becoming a more complex conversation. But I just appreciate everybody's willingness to keep stepping back a bit and figure out how we have all those voices in to get us to where we need to get to. And the level of, the number of people who have also said, I need to be in as part of a solution, not like, I mean, that, that number has grown and gotten more passionate as the conversation has evolved, so I'm just wanting to appreciate that. But thank you for that thoughtful conversation.
Excuse me, I would like to have a moment just to say two points on, if you want to let you do so.
I need to move on the agenda for a second.
So she's on SACET, she's on SACET, yeah. This part of SACET. Do it in your SACET context, yeah.
What I want to say.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of Portland for fifty-two years, and I, I was a educator, a human services administrator, and now I'm a retired volunteer. And I live in the Vernon neighborhood, and I've been there for a long time. I helped to get the PTA started, so I know a lot of the history. I've been watching this district since the early eighties, when you did your first closures. And not, not watching with a critical eye, but wanting to be a part of solutions. There are two things that I want to say before I leave here tonight. The first of which is, I hope that you understand that the history of what has happened in this cluster contributes greatly to the conclusions and the results. In other words, with all of the changes and the turmoil that has occurred, it has affected people's interests, willingness, and involvement in the schools in this cluster. I've had conversations with people who question whether they want their kids to come to a school in the Jefferson Cluster for fear that they don't know how long that school will remain open or will be closed. So you have to take responsibility for that. I want to be sure that you understand that. This is not accusatory, I just want you to understand it's human nature. People, the, the first law of nature is self-preservation. And so people will look to know what is going to be the future. The people who were resistant to come to Vernon four years ago, who are now in the leadership there and, and promoting growth in that school at no cost to the district. Our, our music program started with not a penny being requested from the district. We got a grant and did the gardens, but that's not the issue. There is one other point that I want to make, and that I'm not sure if you're aware of it. You may not have intended it, but you have made a crack in white privilege. And what you've done now is you have exposed Caucasian people to what African-American and Hispanic people and other minorities have been exposed to for their entire lives. Now, I'll tell you what the outgrowth of that can be. I'm now hearing people who want to come together because they understand it. They're not any more comfortable with what they had thrown onto them than we have been with it. And as a result, they're not ready, you know, what, what people always said when African-Americans complained was that, get over it. So now what I ask my neighbors and my colleagues at our neighborhood school, are you ready to get over it? I don't think they are. And so what you have created is an atmosphere that will bring a coalition like something you have never seen before. So just get ready for it.
And I, thank you for your comments, by the way, and I, and I do hope your assessment is correct, and the people that rose today are the, in it for the long run, because, like you also have been in the committee not as long, you know, half your probably of your time, and I, and I'm with you. I think that the folks, in particular, the leadership of the Black United Front, have been very, very straight in regards to what, what the expectation was, and what the changes that they were, they have opposed, and what they proposed also. And we get to deliver on that as a district. And I think that's the, what I'm hearing from my colleagues, is I think the hesitation to move forward without truly understanding the impact of this, of our decision today over the long run, and taking into consideration, I think, the history of, of decisions that have been made in, in this cluster. So I, I don't think that we take it lightly. I think that, you know, we are as concerned as, as any of the, of the folks here present in regards to how can we deliver a better education for children throughout the district. And the challenge, of course, is, you know, this discussion right now. Nothing, I think, precludes us, I mean, unlike what Mr. Bailey said, there's nothing that precludes us from taking one action or another. But I think that we want to make sure that we have adequate information and, and, and a process, I think, for us to, to engage, I think, with each other. Because part of it is, I think, that many times we, we rely on staff, and we sort of put him out there, and they take the heat for, for what ultimately is going to be our actions. And we're trying to change the dynamic, as you can see from the discussion that we had here today. I hope that's indicative, I think, of, of what we hope to, to accomplish in this process. So I thank staff again for, for their additional information they provided, the SACET for their, for their presentation to the people that came to, 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 to listen and to provide testimony.